All right, we're back at our executive session. Like I said, no votes were taken, no actions made. Mr. Woods made a motion, Mr. Johnson second. Up next, we have approved agenda items. We have, here we have considered to amend the agenda and include item of new business as follows, 6H reads authorization to exec grant award letters in amount of $70,020 and $241,000 which are continuation of the COVID grant originally awarded in 2020, as well as new grant award letter in the amount of $244,364 for domestic violence prosecution on behalf of Fourth Circuit Solicitor's Office. So we need to-
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we'll make the consideration, the changes to the agenda, 6-H.
All right, we have a motion to change it, so that is changed to with 6H. So that will be one of 6H.
We're gonna add, I guess, add on-
Yeah, we'll add it. All right, now that we have added that, so now that we approve the agenda, well, we have a motion in a second, all in favor raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Now we have approved agenda as amended.
The second?
Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Up next, we have a public hearing, number eight, for ordinance 820, ordinance to amend personnel policy procedures, ordinance regarding rate of overtime rate for employees engaged in law enforcement. Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, this is the final, this is the public hearing, we're ready for the final reading for the change in overtime rate for law enforcement, uh, public officials. This is the final step to finalize that.
Comments from council, from the public? All right, we'll close that. Up next, approval of minutes for September 14th, 2021?
I move we accept the minutes as written.
Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand. It's unanimous. All right, number five is 5A, ordinance 820, ordinance to amend the personnel policy procedures, ordinance regarding the rate of overtime pay for employees engaged in law enforcement. It's the third reading, this is the public hearing that we just had and so with that-
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we'll accept ordinance number 820.
Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you for that. Ordinance 821, flood prevention ordinance, second reading. Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, this is the second reading of ordinance, if routine, do you govern flood planning, flood related matters, to make a possible, there'd be flood insurance for the government, that's what we're doing, do you want to add or not?
All right. That, we have a motion for-
We have a motion that we accept each and one.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Up next, ordinance 822, ordinance authorizing pursuant of Title 12, Chapter 44, the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as is amended, the execution and delivery of the infrastructure credit agreement between Marlborough County and the company known as county as Project Feather, which includes a grant of certain special source revenue credits and amendments to existing fee in lieu of ad valorem tax agreements between county and Project Feather to develop for the extension of the investment period therein, and amendment to another existing fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement between the county and Project Feather to provide for an extension of the term of the agreement and other related matters. Second reading, Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, this ordinance would continue the tax incentive, providing existing industry here, this could allow us to maintain our business costs as low, and also stabilize the revenue we receive from our tax. You all, in the last calendar year, if you want to don't borrow, this is the longest time to try to help our business community, evolve and adhere, also check our revenue something in, this is a good act for the time.
Okay.
I move we accept ordinance 822.
Have a motion in a second for 822, all in favor raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Up next, new business, ordinance 823, ordinance authorizing the inclusion of one or more properties located in Marlborough County into a Morden County business and industrial park. A plan for an alternative location of revenues derived from the fee in lieu of tax payments made with respect to such properties placed into the park and other matters related there to, first reading, title only. Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, this action is a commonplace action with economic development projects. We do have an economic development project that requires this action. This is by title only, which allow us, allows council to start the process of three readings. So we request that you approve title only with the details coming at second and third reading.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we'll accept title only, order number 823.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Order 824, ordinance authorizing to sell and lease a property owned by Marlborough County for the purpose of the economic development. I guess that's referring to the first, where it goes with ordinance 823.
Mr. Chairman, this is along the lines of the same project, and as you know, with most projects we have, if they're going in a county industrial park or other county on land, that part of the trade there is to provide land or to sell the land to them. So this would, by title only, start that process. That process takes three readings and a public hearing, so by doing it by title only, that process can start to accommodate the schedule of the project.
I make a motion that we accept ordinance 824.
Have a motion in a second for ordinance 824, all in favor raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. C is Resolution 102101, resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the office of the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control by Marlborough County for fiscal year 2022, used oil grant funds in amount of $30,950 in authorization to accept grant if awarded.
Mr. Chairman, this is something we do every year, that you all consider every year, it's a grant from DHEC, there is no match, and it allows us to take used oil at our convenience centers. So it's a good thing, and it's free money, so it funds a project, a program we have. So we ask that you approve this request.
I move we approve Resolution 102101.
A second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor raise your right hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Resolution 102102, resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the office of South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control in Marlborough County fiscal year 2022 for the waste tire grant funds in amount of $2,750 in authorization to accept if awarded.
The same as the oil grant, except it's for used tires. That's, it's that simple. No match.
Motion, second.
Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand. All right, it's unanimous, thank you. Resolution 102103, resolution to approve amendments to the 2021-22 budget with regards to increased cost for salaries and benefits for the detention and sheriff's department and other expenses. Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, the first part is what we've talked about at some length, that's to change the overtime rate for the sheriff's department and detention center. The other expenses relate to the electronic sign that we've had a lot of discussion, and Councilman Strowman and I have had some offline discussion, and he's done some work, and been, we've tried to help each other with that. So there is $60,000 in there for that. That's probably more than enough for one sign, maybe enough for two. So by approving this, it puts the money in place. You know, in past meetings, I had mentioned that publicly, that we may be able to do it with our existing budget, but that wasn't the case due to the amount it turned out to be, and, you know, just, we try to follow the rules, and, you know, a lot of times that means bringing it back to you, and, so that's what we've done here to put the money in place. So we'd ask y'all approve this, so we can move forward with both of those items.
Motion in a second, all in favor raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution 102104, resolution to amend premium pay for Marlborough County government employees in accordance with the internal final rule for United States Treasury and American Rescue Plan.
Mr. Chairman, you know, y'all have approved this, or approved the intent to do this at the last meeting, and you also approved that we try to adjust this amount so that it comes out to be a net of about $2,500 per full-time employee, and a lesser amount for part-time employees. And so, in order to accommodate the majority of employees, the request in this is 3,250 for full-time, and 1625 for part-time employees. In order to qualify, you have to work a minimum of 500 hours during the period between March 9th, 2020, and October 12th, 2021, and currently be on our payroll. Those are rules that, you know, are part of this, this program. So we went back and tried to figure that out. Now, some folks may claim more exemptions, some folks may claim less exemptions, so it's, it'll be a little different. But the goal was, as y'all approved, to try to let people get $2,500 there for their time during this crisis.
You know, doing this, this is sort of through the state government, the rules of regulation?
It's part of the American Rescue Plan. And we actually looked at the counties around us that had done some work on this to try to get the rules, and that's, that's the rules for it.
I make a motion that we approve resolutions 102104.
Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Resolution 102105, authorize the negotiation of repurchase and of transfer of property in Marlborough County industrial park for the purpose of economic development. Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, this is also related to the economic development project, and there's a need to acquire a small parcel of land for the project. So this would allow us to, staff to go out and hopefully make a trade, actually, oddly enough, to acquire the land. And just for the public, or whoever's listening, in county government to purchase something takes one vote, to sell it takes three votes and a public hearing. And you, as you can understand, you know, you're, if you're selling, you're getting rid of something that belongs to the taxpayer, so it's a bigger deal. But this requires a single vote, and we would request that you all approve this resolution.
I move we accept resolution 102105.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor raise your right hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Then we do 6H, authorization of the executive grant award letters in amount of $70,020 and $241,402 which are continuation of the COVID grant originally awarded in 2020, as well as new grant award letters for the amount of $244,364 for domestic violence prosecution on behalf of Fourth Circuit Solicitor's Office. Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, we are the fiscal agent for these grants for the Solicitor's Office, you know, that we also, their payroll goes through us and the public defender as well. So they have to come to us for this, and so we, abiding by council's longtime policy of any grants need to be approved beforehand, we appreciate you all adding it to the agenda first. But staff, Mr. Park and I, you know, we've looked at this, there's no financial obligation on the county, it's just a pass-through. So we would, we would request you to approve this, they're very meaningful projects, particularly the domestic violence prosecution.
We have a motion.
I move we accept this, uh, motion.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor raise your right hand. All right, thank you, it's unanimous. Up next, appointments to boards and commissions. Any appointments to board and commissions, at this time. All right, up next, finance report, Mr. Westphal.
Mr. Chairman, council members and Mr. Mullin, you have before you record for the first three months ending September 30th, 2021. And at that date, we had expenses that totaled $1,347, the revenues that totaled $1,347,231. Expenses for that three-month period totaled $2,792,535 of a $12,658,582 budget for 22.06% year-to-date. Any questions or questions answered?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Park. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, you have your, in front of you a copy of the administrator's report. I will, under the events, number one, I'll defer to Chairman Steen after I'm through about the community meeting in Wallace. As you, as we do every month, we recognize employee and service anniversaries in excess of five years, and this year we have three. Linda Coffey with six years, DT Turner with nine, and Jose Lemon with 14. We, we have a community, there's a community drive-through trunk-or-treat planned with the city of Bennettsville, Marlborough County, the public library, Marion Wright-Elton Library and other communities to have a drive-through trunk-or-treat on October 30th, Saturday, from 2:00 to 4:00. And in order to make sure everybody, you know, has access to that, there are five locations. In Bennettsville, it'll be at Courthouse Square, in Clyo, it'll be at Bennett Park, in Belenham, it'll be at Prince Recreation Center, in Wallace at the Wallace Middle School, and in McCall at the McCall Middle School. So making sure everybody has easy access to it. And please come out, I'm sure if you'd like to set up, you know, and bring some bags of candy and be somebody giving them out, that, that would be greatly appreciated. I have four items under the administrator's report. First is some good news with the recreation project that we've been talking about. The Partnership Image Committee has finalized their decision to hire a consultant, which is Green Play LLC, and we are soon to meet with them again, and hope that they'll start their work within 30 days. And as you remember, they'll seek input from everyone, from leaders such as yourself, to citizens and community groups and others about our needs here for recreation and quality of life type programs. And the result will be, they'll come back and compile all of that and try to advise us on, you know, what we need, what'll work for our current need, and even for other needs that may be outside of our current need. So that's a good thing, and please look for communication soon on trying to schedule times for you all to be involved with that. The strategic planning meeting, the county council strategic planning meeting is set for Thursday, November 4th, and it'll be an all-day thing, 8:30 to 4:00. We will, as you know from our communications, we'll review our past initiatives and where we stand with those, we'll review issues that are in the community from y'all's perspective and staff's perspective as well, and then spend a lot of time working on initiatives for the future. For those of you who were here, the last time we did the full-blown one in 2017, it can be a really good process, and staff really likes it because it gives us a roadmap to go by and to go after. We did send letters to DOT about some dangerous intersections that were brought up last meeting, and I had a call and was to get a letter, but haven't gotten a letter back yet, about Salem Road, two intersections on Salem Road and one where 79 merges. And basically, they said they've done all they can do, that they're not, DOT doesn't think they need to put bumps or, you know, things on the road to slow that down. We're continuing to have discussions with them, but, you know, we're at, they're the ones that have to do it. There was some mention that we could appeal to a higher level, and I think we probably ought to just write a letter to that next level in DOT to have them look at it, because the, all of the intersections identified by council are serious situations, and we need to look at them. The last thing is not necessarily a pleasant thing, but I think it needs to be said, you know, it's no secret that we've been in the TV news here lately, and, you know, that's unfortunate. It all revolves around alleged misconduct by elected officials and employees of elected officials. And it just needs to be said, and to be clear, that county council, nor the county administrator, have any legal control over the hiring, firing, or disciplinary action with regards to elected officials or their employees. We have good relationships with folks, sheriff and others, and we try to assist them in any way possible, but when it comes down to it, y'all or me, empowered by you all, have no say. So when, when folks in the community try to lump everybody together, you know, that's, whether we would do something or not, we don't have the ability to do that. And I felt like it needed to be said, our staff are, you know, getting phone calls and, and hearing a lot of comments, and, you know, it's something we can't do anything about, unfortunately. And so, Mr. Chairman, I know the Wallace community meeting is your thing, so I'll, if anybody has any questions on anything else, I'll sit down. Okay, thank y'all.
I'll save it for my thing, for the community thing. All right. Next, I think we have recognition of citizens' requests before council. If you would, we have four people signed up. Come up to the podium, state your name and where you're at, and like I said, first we have Mr. Keith Bruington. Mind everybody, we try to keep it in about three minutes. Mr. Bruington.
Good evening, Chairman, council members, administrator, guests. This evening, I just want to briefly ask one question, but then again, I don't normally ask questions because I can't get a response, and I'll just make a statement. I was going to ask who served, but you are serving Marlborough County, so I appreciate that. I am holding up a letter, did you receive this in your packets, council members? So if you did, I won't have to read anything off of this, I can just make some comments. If anybody else needs one, I have a couple extra. It's been brought to my attention that our veteran service officer hasn't had assistance for quite some months now, and I think it's probably just that the paperwork is on the wrong spot. I'm sure there's, may have been an oversight where the legislative delegation appointed the person over the Veterans Affairs Office, but it's for the county council to hire the person to as, be administrative assistant. I'm sure that we all go to the doctor, or the dentist, or even an eye exam. Someone gives us paperwork before we ever see the actual physician or the professional. Our veteran service officer is a professional, and they need assistance as well. They need somebody to field the people before they come to them. They also need it because of privacy. If you have your veteran service officer doing all the work, there's no privacy. If someone's at the desk giving out their private information and someone walks in the door, there's no separation as it used to be. Again, I think the posting of that particular job is probably laying with some non-essential paperwork and just didn't get where it needs to be. So I'm asking county council and administrator to rifle through some papers and see that it is the county council's job to appoint someone in that spot. The legislative delegation did their part, now I'm asking for you to do your part because the veterans here and within a wide region count on that office to be open and efficient. And I would truly thank you to get that office back fully staffed as soon as possible, especially, we have Veterans Day coming up, veterans, there's normally two events during November, which are the parade and dinner dance, and we don't want to burn the person out that's doing the job. I thank you for your turn and your consideration, and look forward to seeing that job filled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruington. Up next, we have Mr. Franklin, is it Smith? All right.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to react on the rescue plan. I'm a former employer of Marlborough County Recreation, and I was working during the time, and I'm only, I'm not only addressing this to me, I'm addressing for, for other guys that was out there also. And from March the 9th, 2020, into this year, I was part of, and I'm calling, I think we all deserved a little bit of the rescue money, because I caught COVID, my whole family got it, you know, and it was a serious trip. And deserved it so, I think we deserve a little bit of the pandemic money, just like the rest of the crew that are working there now. And that's what I come to address, that if possible, I'd like to be able to know about that for, for the group, and hopefully we can, I don't know, I don't know why they're not here tonight, but I'm a spokesperson for them, and I got very sick, my family got sick, so I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I think Mr. Mullin has a, there's a criteria for whatever we'll get, if he can, he can, he can share that, after, I mean, after a later date. Mr., Miss, is it Wendy Woods? Miss Wendy Woods?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Wendy Woods with the PD Coalition. Thank you for allowing me to speak, chair, everyone in the building. What I'm here for is October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and it was great to hear the Solicitor's Office with that resolution, and that was awesome to hear tonight. And what I would like to say is to give notice of what, with South Carolina, we ranked sixth in the nation on domestic violence, which is a silent killer. And my thing is, it's silent to me no more, and I'm sure it's not silent to the sheriff's office or our police department, but if you all just be aware of domestic violence of, in Marlborough County, and also different events that we plan for awareness this month. A lot of it is virtual. I know our football team will be wearing purple socks on Friday at the Friday night game, thanks to Coach Collins. Just different things that we're trying to do just to bring awareness. One of them is we have a Lil Nia's lemonade stand. Miss Lil Nia is a young girl that wanted to do a lemonade stand, and she did this lemonade stand for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and she wants to do it again for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Just drop on by, October the 28th, on a Thursday, at Parsonage, 108 Parsonage, just to show your, your solidarity with domestic violence awareness. Also, another event who I will, is Marlboro Men Against Domestic Violence. It's almost like a campaign that we're doing, it's a video where I've gotten the sheriff and different ones, different Marlboro men, and I'll blame Councilman Woods, that I would like to, at the end of this video, the men on the council, and you simply just say, Marlboro, I'm a Marlboro man against domestic violence. And if you, you all just come see me, and I have a little iPhone that's been working very well, so if you can come see me, and we'll just do a little, little video of you saying, I'm a Marlboro man against domestic violence. So thank you, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right. Up next, I'm trying to read that name, but, no, Ms. Pearlie Lawson.
That is a nice gesture. Good afternoon, good evening, members of the council, Chairman Steen and all members and everyone present. I'm just here again, and this is a baby that's near my heart because I've worked hard with the census, and after the census come redistricting. And this is the first opportunity that community people will have an opportunity to understand how the, what the process of those lines being drawn. I didn't work this hard for nothing because I really want to see Marlborough County lines drawn fairly. Not that I'm saying that something was so wrong, but in a lot of districts, not just county council, but on city council, there's a lot of streets that's broken and fragmented, where one side of the street, side A is District 1, side B is District 2, it's a lot of voter confusion. Not only with the state, with the county, but the state has the same problem, areas having two senators and two representatives and all those things, and sometimes still not get- not receiving what they need to receive. I'm concerned about that. I've attended those House and Senate district meetings for a purpose. I want to be sure that Marlborough County gets its fair share of what we're supposed to have. I know the breakdown, I understand that. We're working closely with our state NAACP office and some line drawers in Columbia, that we have access to some maps ourselves to see that information, and I want to be of assets to this county. When you have those scheduled meetings, I would encourage it, not only just Marlborough County and NAACP, but any community group to take a part. I really think in all areas of this county that we need to look at to be sure that lines are drawn fairly and that the people of this community have the opportunity to see that they are. So I do appreciate your time. I appreciate the fact that you consider me a person to bring you information, so I thank you for this, and you have a good night. Thank you.
Ms. Purley. Thank you. We thank each and every one of you for coming, and like I said, we took notes, and our staff's got notes for everybody to come, we got a record, everybody that spoke, so we'll address everything, our staff will try to address everything in an appropriate and timely manner. Mr. Woods.
The biggest concern like in quite your community, like all the other community, is our young people, hopefully during the workshop we have in November, we can address the upcoming basketball season. Almost two years now that our kids is getting so lackadaisical. We, as leaders of the community, we got to find some shape, form, or fashion to get our young boys and girls out of the TV, out of the house, into some sporting activities. With two years, going on two years, we lost a lot of athletes to the streets because a lot of kids, they look forward to recreation and so forth. We can, AAU is a good outlet, but when AAU football costs a hundred fifty-plus dollars per child, and recreational football costs thirty-five, forty dollars per child, we can see the difference. And same thing in basketball. Unfortunately, AAU basketball cannot play until after high school basketball season over with, so we're going to have kids chopping at the bit of doing something. As a former coach and along Dr. Johnson and other coaches in the area, when parents keep calling you, say, why aren't we doing the recreation? We say, say, we working on it. But you know, that, that time and now is, that excuse that can be used continue for the twenty, twenty-two season coming up. Both times, basketball sign-up starts in November and we start playing January. So hopefully during the November time, we have, we can construct some kind of sign-up that would be more efficient. Is whether we got to go back to the old way or where that case may be, but our kids need to get into some kind of recreation activities. Besides that, you know, we got, you know, everybody looking forward to the Halloween and so forth, and, but, one wish Jackie a happy birthday over there, and Bob a birthday end of the month, October, but mine's on this Saturday. So my day is covered up real soon, so I would wish Anthony Wilson a happy birthday. When y'all see him, you know, tell him happy birthday, he'd be happy to hear it, and that's all I got, just trying to cry, y'all.
All right, this place, be good, Mr. Strobin.
Yes, I have a birthday to you all. First of all, just give a prayer for our county. The events over the weekend, Sheriff out, once again, we call on your expertise to go hammer some mess, you know. I don't, I don't know what to say about that, man. Just God bless you, man, stay safe out there. That's it. Recreation, I see through the budget that Mr. Parks says that we're spending money on recreation, you know, but I don't see anything that we're doing in recreation right now, so hopefully we can get that moving. Basically, that's it.
I'd like to echo Councilman Strobin's prayers for Sheriff Lemon and the deputies and all those who work in law enforcement on these days. Can imagine the constant pressure you all are under, but we can continue to pray for you and pray for your safety and your health, that you can continue to do your job, ability as you have been doing. Just to echo again, recreation is so important, it's more than just a basketball bounce up and down a court or a football thrown across a football field. Some of the kids depend on that time and that engagement time, so we really need to be forecasting how we will provide a safe environment for the kids to engage in recreation. But there are a lot of kids over the last two years that have been lost. I saw a kid the other day and I almost didn't even recognize him. You know, two years in it, there's a lot can happen with the kid in two years. That transition between twelve and fourteen, a lot can happen, and a lot of kids I'm looking at now and I'm not even recognizing. So let's continue to do our very, very best to advocate for a better Marlborough County. You know, there's a lot of things that are going on that is counteractive to us being better in Marlborough County, things that we can't control, but what we can control, let's do our very, very best. Vaccination, there's a couple of vaccination events coming up. Let's continue to remind folks that if they are able to, and if they have the, you know, the right information and the go-ahead from their medical professional, please consider getting vaccinated. And that's important for us to get back to a sense of normalcy, and that's all what we want, to get back to getting out and being safe, and vaccination is a part of that process. So those, if you don't know, if you know some people who's not being vaccinated, give them the information on these events. We have one coming up, I think next week, of the vaccination, coming up on the twenty-eighth, there's another vaccination event. There's a lot going on behind the scenes, but it's up to us to be able to engage our residents to ensure that they have the correct information. Information is power, and sometimes, unfortunately, people don't have the information. You know, we can say that the information is out there, it's on Facebook, it's on display, but sometimes nothing beats that communication, that day-to-day communication when you see people. So let's do our very, very best to continue to advocate for a better Marlborough County.
Mr. Mason?
Just continue supporting this community. With the Truck Tree coming up, I'll say that in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, Military Agency, we'll be showing a movie the night after the Truck Tree on the Courthouse Square. And it'll be a fun one, that fall coming. I'll get things out, so.
What's that movie?
It's going, it's not going to be scary. It'll probably be something spooky, dude. I knew you'd be scared.
What's the black one?
I just want to add that, what everybody's saying, I really love that movie, but just kind of watch out for your neighbors and stuff for these holidays coming up, and during these holidays, people get the stealing and things get missing and, you know, kind of watch out for your neighbors and stuff a little bit, if it don't look right, and ask them questions or whatever. Thank you, Sheriff, for what you're doing, and y'all got a tough job out here these days, I tell you that, my prayers go with you.
Again, also prayers for Sheriff from the Sheriff's Department. If you watch the nightly news, there's hardly a night that you don't see five or six different places across the country where a deputy stops someone, and the outcome is not being good for him or his family, and most of the time, the suspect too. But, you know, the main thing is these guys put their life on the line every time they put on that uniform, and we really need to say our prayers for them. Academy Road Project, the bridge at Fletcher Pond, two weeks ago, I guess on Wednesday, the engineers from DOT, the engineers from DHEC met with the pastor at the Methodist Church, and they reviewed the contract. There's a couple of technicalities that has to be cleared up by the engineer, everything else is in place, so it looks like probably in short order, the Academy Road Project is going to proceed with being repaired. There'll be, I'll have more information on it as soon as the engineer clears up these couple of technicalities. One of them was they were classifying that pond as a high-water dam, and it's not. Nobody believes it's a high-water dam. And the other was just a small, small technical issue. But anyway, I know everybody'd be glad to get the Academy Road opened up, and Jason's working, like I said, got a meeting coming up on, on OY Road, and just, holidays coming, like I said, watch out for your neighbors, a lot, like I said, a lot of stealing goes on during these times, and just need to, everybody pay attention to your surroundings, and I am going to have to be excused.
I know you're good. Sheriff, you, tell you for you.
Mr. Chairman, Council, I do want to say that just we and I appreciate y'all, and I want y'all to, Sheriff, I appreciate y'all's support, and y'all can really support me and the sheriff, and I appreciate that, and I want to take a bite of it. And if you can recall, I had that same club closed down for two years. There was no issue with that, I guess, while the club was not open. Being a solicitor, getting a letter, we had to complain, and the owner of the club found it, of course, we had the defense attorney move it to a judge, and of course, we followed it in, and the judge said, well, maybe sixty days on the roof, they blew it, and he and I hope, and thank you for helping, probably for anybody we've been ahead. And of course, you also saw it happen, heard it be out some more, and we've been pretty hard at it since then. We got the marshals involved, Sheriff from Richmond County, Sheriff from Scottville County, sent help to us, helped like, you know, we're looking for five guys. We're close on one of, as I'm speaking just now, I got a text, we're close on one. They have not made the red shift for the trip, like, and they can rest in the fire and miss the creek. These guys, the bad guys, two of them are out of jail in Richmond County, right now from Earth. One of them is out there in Richmond County, so we're not dealing with them, folks, church members, like, yes, we're dealing with some bad guys. And when y'all say prayers, certainly remember me, you remember us, because we got to ask you on Facebook that we're so pleasant, some kind of good sinners, but you guys, and I have told my folks, and I stand, I'm taking a bite, and I got some folks up there now, and I'm probably, when I leave here, I want to, and hopefully we get them screwed again. Thank y'all so very much, and wish y'all be. Sir, when you go to the cemetery, if you don't call them, I'm going to call them, I have to, I hear they ain't giving us, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. And I want to, you know, echo what the council said, our prayers are with you and your department, you know, everybody, you know, whenever you, when you leave home that day, you don't know if you're going to make it back, you know, just from, from whatever, so, you know, you actually go into the, we call it in the, in the hot area, so, you know, you go into the bad guy, so, you know, like I said, our prayers is that you always come out victorious, and so, like I said, but our prayers are with you. And so, I thank staff for hard work, you know, for, anytime we talk about any economic development project, it's a good thing for county and for council, so we thank y'all for that. Thank you, the ones that come out and spoke tonight, we thank y'all for coming out, taking time out of your day to address problems and issues and just bring them before council, you know, not every time you hear them, but we thank you for coming, coming here. And Ms. Purley, she makes it a habit, and like I said, she comes every time, and say, well, we look forward to her, so, you know, and she's passionate about something, and that's what we need people to be, about passionate about things in our county, you know, because, you know, Dr. Johnson say, you know, there, there only, some people don't care, you know, you'll have it and they don't, and, you know, then other ones do, so we do need people to care because that's, that's what's going to turn our county around. I mean, you know, and we say, we're, we're going in the right direction, but, you know, one little teeny news media thing, you know, it puts a blith on you, and, you know, and there's nothing you can do about it, you know, so all we can do is pray and keep moving forward and, you know, look, look forward, don't look back, that's the only thing we can do, always look forward, don't look back, you know, remind us where we come from, but look forward for where we're going. And so, the other thing we had is, you know, we talked about a, a community meeting up in Wallace, and we were planning on having it Thursday night, and speaking with some, some folks this afternoon, that Monday at five-thirty at the Wallace School, and so would be, would be best suited. And so, I was going to try to relay that to Mr. Mullin, that we were scheduled for Thursday, but talking with some people this afternoon, they said Monday would be better at five-thirty, and would have DHEC and SC DOT representatives there, and so if council can get there, you know, we'd greatly like to have, you know, our focus, you know, is going to ask the questions about OY Road, you know, it's been down since Hurricane Florence, which is what, three years, and it's still down. A lot of people have to go around that way. Sheriff's Department's been there many a times, just when the bridge is out, if you get a nine-one call, when the address is saying, they don't tell you the bridge is out, it just says on twenty-one so-and-so OY Road, well, whenever you go down one end and, you know, and you got to go another side, you got to go seven miles out of the way, well, and, you know, that's, that's unacceptable, you know, school buses have to go around it, kids have to go around it to go, you know, kids, parents, just citizens going to work, you know, seven to ten miles out of your way, one-way. So if a parent has to carry the kid to school, you know, you're talking about thirty, forty miles a day, you know, so we're going to have that meeting, and hopefully we can get some answers. I wanted to, I didn't want to hear it secondhand, I want to get everybody in a room to where, you know, the head official's there to say, tell us what the steps are, I mean, what, what direction are you taking, why is it taking so long? You know, all the way I know to do it is get in a room, hash it out, and like I said, hopefully we can have an outcome, at least some direction of outcome, you know, by next Monday night. So it'll be Monday night at five-thirty, and so, I know Ms. Jackie had asked, and we put it in the paper for this week, so if you can change it and get it in there for, for Monday, we ask it, you know, so, but it'll be Monday at five-thirty at Wallace School, so we'll ask y'all to. Yeah, probably the gym or the commons area, I mean, they got, it'd be one of the two, so, I know, and, you know, I know you've been asking about the intersections, different places, so, you know, we'll have the, I mean, we'll have the head of, you know, DOT there, so I think we can ask them those questions, it'll be a perfect time, when you, when you get them in a room, you can ask the questions you want, so, like I said, we should have them there, so, all right. Anything else for the good of the body? If not, we'll call this meeting adjourned.